Call the East Green Bush Central School District meeting for January 10th to order. Board members present this evening, all board members except for Elise Steinbeck and Joanne Taylor will not be able to attend this evening. So with that, we do rise, please rise and join me with a pledge. You said, I know this is a small room, so I hope people are comfortable. I talked to Mr. Simons that maybe in the future for me, it's here, we'll move to the auditorium. So there's more space for people and for comfort. Okay. So people can sit down and it's a better environment for us. All right. So the first order of business is I open up the public hearing for purposes of discussing reserves and I'll turn over the call of the meeting for Mr. Simons.
Oh, yes. As the community is aware and the board is aware, we, the district is in the process of planning for a capital project, which is a renovation project for our schools, which will be voted on in May. During the course of this particular school year, we have been working with our new director of business and finance, Jennifer Mulligan, to reserve, to review the reserves of the district. Reserves are accounts established by school districts and municipalities for monies that are set aside legally for projected future purposes. We've looked at those reserves and are recommending an adjustment that will enable some monies to be moved into a capital reserve, which will better position us to be able to make the capital project more affordable for the local taxpayers. And we are projecting that the amount of money that we will have in the reserve to appropriate towards the capital project will result in a $116 million project having no additional tax impact on our local taxpayers. So I'm going to ask Jennifer to kind of explain the numbers and go a little bit more into detail on the nature of these reserves and the purpose of these reserves.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simons. So back in 2022, the district, the voters approved a capital reserve fund and the funding for that particular capital reserve fund can come from a variety of sources. The current balance of that reserve fund is $750,000. The reserve that we're looking to appropriate as part of the capital project is $2 million. So that, that variance is 1,250,000. So after reviewing the other district reserves, particularly the retirement reserves and the reserve for non-certified staff, which is the employees' retirement system, we discovered that that reserve has, is very well funded. So after looking at that, there was an opportunity to make a transfer out of that particular reserve fund into the capital reserve fund and still maintaining a very healthy reserve balance for the, in the, in that employee retirement reserve fund. So that's basically the nature of what we're looking to do. After the transfer of these funds, the employee retirement reserve fund will still be funded equivalent to three years of retirement contributions, which can be used to help offset any significant swings, you know, in contribution rates from the retirement system.
Thank you, Jennifer. We had talked about this recommendation at the board meeting at Belltop a couple of months ago.
A few times, yep.
Yep.
All right. So just to reiterate, this is a reserve that's set aside for the employee contributions to the retirement system at New York State for non-certified employees who are there. And then again, the board budgets for this, but there are reserves set aside in case those rates increase dramatically. And we have these funds available to help budgetarily for our taxpayers so that we're not impacting the taxpayers year to year in our budget. So just so it's clear for everybody. And we're just shifting those because there's, there's quite a bit in there now and this will help support our capital project.
Correct.
So at this point, are there any public comments about the reserve?
Are you also taking questions about?
Not, well, not for, just for the reserves. This is the public hearing for this portion of the meeting and then we'll close the hearing and then we'll go into a regular meeting and then there'll be a public comment period for that meeting.
So there are no questions about the public reserve right now, just comments?
You can certainly, no, you can certainly come to the-
I just have a couple of questions.
About the reserves?
Yes.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Danielle Lena. I have a son at Janay and a son in nursery school. So is the employee reserve that you're taking out of funded by employee contributions themselves? And then if so, I know you talk a lot about capital versus, you know, other types of money, which usually goes to like salaries and stuff. So, you know, if we're talking about the color of money, I'm just curious if this is already capital money or if it's, you know, salary like money that's being put towards capital projects?
So I can answer part of your question and I'm going to defer to Jennifer. This particular, both of these reserves are monies that are, include monies that are set aside for specific purposes. So for example, we are not permitted by law to take money out of the, the ERS reserve to develop a new program or to hire additional staff. That, those monies are dedicated for a particular reserve. They have to be legally authorized to transfer into a different reserve, which legally is authorized for the purpose of, of capital expenses such as facilities. So these monies cannot be shifted in a way that goes into the general fund budget and gives the board complete discretion on how they want to spend it. It's dedicated for a specific purpose. And as far as your first part of the question regarding the funding sources of the ERS reserve?
Perhaps I wasn't here when the initial reserves were established, but usually the reserves are funded from perhaps just budgetary appropriations. So the, the board could make a decision through the budget process to appropriate part of the district funds to help fund the reserve, to set aside funds to help weather any rainy day storms that may happen, you know, with the significant fluctuations that happen in the stock market. That impacts the employer contribution rates that the district would need to pay to the retirement system. So these reserves help set aside funds to be able to help manage that in the event that the budget wasn't, normal budget process wasn't able to accommodate a significant increase.
I think your question too was about employee contributions. Did you say that?
Yes, if it was funded specifically by employee contributions.
No, no, it is not funded by employee contribution.
Budgetary process.
Yep. So employee contributions are deductions from employee paychecks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I am Brian Eilenberg. I'm a senior at Columbia High School. How do the teachers feel about the reserve for their retirement being shifted to their, their, for the capital project?
So I think there's a mis, a little bit of a misperception. The, the funds that are in this reserve are utilized to pay the district's portion payment to the New York State retirement system. And this particular reserve is for non-instructional employees. So these are not monies that when the employees retire are part of their retirement benefits. They are, they're, the district's portion are used in part to fund the district's portion of what the district pays for the employees' retirement payment. So it's a direct, these funds, in addition to, there's another line in our budget that includes these types of payments that go to the, directly to the New York State retirement system. These monies are not directly used for employee benefits.
Thank you.
They pay the district a portion of those employee benefits.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Good questions? All right. At this point, then I'll close the public comment period and we move to board of education comments. Cheryl, anything? John, pretty clear? Mark, good? Jen? All right. We'll close the board comments and then we have the consideration of the resolution to make that reserve adjustment and transfer. Any questions or comments, board members? Seeing none, any motion to approve? Jesse, I need a second. John, all those in favor? Approved. All right. So the resolution has passed and we'll make that change for that reserve. At this point, I will now close the public hearing and we will move to our regular agenda. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:11. Jeannie, where am I killed? Attendance hasn't changed and we did the pledge and so we will move to our student council. Cole and Rome, how are you?
Good, everything? Everybody good?
Break. So we just want to recap before break. We had such a fun time with our fundraiser and we had students and faculty and they had the opportunity to, to take a picture with Santa and you had a professional quality print with borders, props, you name it. So that was just a super fun activity and we want to say a special thank you to Mr. Kilmartin, Mr. Malloy and our own Blue Devil for dressing up as Santa.
In our meeting today, we discussed many exciting fundraiser and event ideas, including a celebration for National Hot Chocolate Day and a community-wide dance-a-thon activity. We also have started to make preparations for end of the year field trip. We are also super excited for many more things that are to come. Thank you so much, guys. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the draft minutes for December 6th. We had postponed that because we did not have appropriate number of board members to pass that. The only board member not present was Cheryl at the time. So any questions, revisions to the minutes from December 6th? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Jesse, second. Mark, closing. All those abstaining, one approved. Next order of business is the draft minutes from December 20th. And looking at the minutes, Michelle was not here, Jesse was not here and Joanne, but we still have myself, Mark, John, Cheryl and Jen. I mean, no Cheryl, I'm sorry. So we have enough for passing those minutes. So any questions or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those. John, I need a second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved, abstained, should say. Jesse and Michelle. So those are approved. All right. Moving on to the board forum. Jesse, got anything? No. Jennifer? Mark? John? Good. Cheryl? Joe? All right. Want to welcome everybody to the scene, full house tonight. Hope everyone had a terrific break, the break. This is our first meeting since prior to the break and I hope everybody made okay, okay with the storm last night too, it was pretty nasty. So moving to our public forum, residents, students, employees and business representatives of East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to existing concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board present will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes and would like to address the board? No one? Yes. Come on up. Squeeze through. Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
It's the first time I've ever done this.
Your name and this kind of where you reside.
I'm sorry?
It's your name, where you reside and your affiliation with the district.
Okay. My name is Heather James and my son is a fifth grader at Belltop.
Okay.
And I'm also the PTO president at Belltop.
Okay.
I just wanted to just make a statement. So I want to start by saying I love being part of this school district. I believe the board of education cares about what constituents think and they take into account what we have to say. I, along with my PTO board, am concerned that an agreement hasn't been reached on the teacher's contract. Here's a couple of reasons we need to quickly come to terms on a fair contract. Happy teachers who feel like their work is appreciated translates into happy students. When teachers feel like the district does not care about them, that translates to the classroom. Teachers are professionals, but they're also human beings. So sometimes it's hard to keep the difference. The closure of St. Rose is going to exacerbate the teacher shortage in our area, less prospective teachers will be coming into the area for their education and many of those St. Rose students from out of the area stayed in the area to help fill our schools. With less teachers, the teacher contract needs to be competitive to attract and retain the best teachers. Also, the cost of living is up everywhere and teachers are making less money now than they did before the pandemic because of the inflation rate wiping out their raises over the past few years. I feel fortunate to be and proud to be able to tell my family and friends about the great schools where I live, how East Green Bush School District was ranked ninth among 84 Capital Region School Districts, first in Rensselaer County by the Albany Business Review, voted the best school district in the Capital Region, in the Times Union Best of the Capital Region 2022 and 23, and I voted for them. They were named the top workplace by the Albany Times Union in 2018, 2019 and 2021. And then Goff was just ranked the number one middle school in the Capital Region by U.S. News and World Report. I feel like in order to remain a highly successful school district, we need high-quality teachers because teachers have the highest impact on the quality of education a school district provides. I'm not confident that, that East Green Bush can continue our high ratings if we lose the high-quality teachers we're so accustomed to having. Our teachers take great care of us, or of all of our kids in the district and it's time that we give them a fair contract so that we can show that we care about and value them. It's important that we continue our stellar reputation in the area and beyond as a sought-after place of employment and center for education. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Hi, back again.
My name is Danielle Lena. I have a son at Janay and one in nursery school as well. So he will be coming here and probably, hopefully to the UPK program and then kindergarten. I've been attending these meetings more frequently in the past couple of months just to gain more knowledge and insight into the board and the administration, seeing how decisions are made and especially how they impact Janay in general. I am part of the PTO. I am the treasurer there and, you know, I see a lot of people here right now. This is not always the case with all these meetings, but more frequently over the last year, we've had more parents and more, you know, just people in general coming to our meetings and then in turn wanting more information about what the board does and how decisions are made, especially on important topics like the, the teachers association and their contract. That is something that I have noticed in the last couple of meetings that I wasn't really aware of before, that there is a significant struggle going on with negotiations. I share all the concerns that were just brought up here. I'm not going to repeat every single one of them, but I was a bit perplexed at the last meeting that I attended because EGTA was here, they spoke. It seemed like, you know, their negotiations are basically about money. That's what everything kind of comes down to. And it looks like they were looking for more support. At the same time, you know, the district's turning around and saying, we're having a hard time coming to, you know, a contract agreement, but, you know, we need our teachers to do more. We need them to help us with absenteeism, you know, praising them, and yet we're not actually putting, you know, our money where our mouth is. So I guess what I'd like to say as a parent of a student at Janay, I have the utmost respect for the board, the administration, the teachers, the staff. I have been in the classrooms. I volunteer in the classrooms. I volunteered at events and I've worked with the teachers side by side at these events. There are some of the best teachers I know. There are some of the best humans I know. And I would just like to voice my support and the support of our Janay PTO for the teachers and believe that they deserve the respect and compensation that makes this district what it is and why so many people want to live here, work here and have their children go to these schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So brief comment, you know, the administration and the, every bargaining here at the district goes through a process of contract negotiations. I mean, we are in the midst of a teachers association contract. I know that we've set up meetings, a meeting.
We had a meeting today.
And there's meetings that are ongoing. So we support our teachers, we respect our teachers. It is a process that both parties have to come together and, and hammer out an agreement. And I think progress will be made and I'm hopeful that we can make the, the progress that's necessary to get an agreement with the association and I appreciate their attendance. As always, they've been here a few times at our meetings and we thank them for that and we thank them for what they do for our kids as well as our parents, what they do in support of our school district. So there is a process happening. We're hopeful that we can continue the positive progress and, and reach an agreement with, with our teachers. So that's really, I have to say that I don't want to comment on any particulars because that's part of negotiation process.
Thank you.
So I hope that helps. All right. Anyone else for last minute, last time? Okay. Thank you and I appreciate it. And again, if for discomfort's sake, we'll move the meeting to, you know, the auditorium if we have to, to come in more people here. And again, I'm hopeful that we can move forward with our, our progress here. All right. Moving on to the presentations for the superintendent, we'll move to the capital project.
Yes. We are working with our architectural firm, Labella, and our construction and management firm, Turner, to review the scope document that we provided the board. Turner is working with us to better understand the proposals and get more detailed information to confirm cost estimates. We're working on that process every week. Last week, we met over at Goff Middle School. We reviewed the scope of work proposed for Goff Middle School and Turner is updating the estimates that our, the chase had done for us. We met at Columbia High School yesterday, I think it was, and we reviewed the scope of work for Columbia High School and we're doing that within each building as we move forward towards May. In addition, we are continuing to confirm financial information regarding the formulas that are used to calculate building aid and we will be bringing further information back to the board as we proceed to have you take a look at any issues that we may experience regarding cost and we're working through that process. Additionally, because we want to have as much public understanding of our project proposal as well as input, we are starting the process of going out and talking with various groups, which will include the town boards of each of our respective towns. I provided the board with a schedule of those meetings, which start tomorrow night with the town board Nassau. It would be great if board members could give a little time to join us in the presentation to the town boards. There's a document attached to this to take a look at in terms of the meeting schedule. And I asked Jeannie if she could, if board members are able to say they might be able to make a particular meeting, we could note it tonight. If the board members want to get back after you look at your calendar, that would be great. But we're going to have a busy calendar of public meetings starting Thursday evening. At this point, the presentation will kind of stay high level with some of the general information of the areas, what we want to improve within our buildings as well as on our sites until such time as the final cost information and scope is reviewed with the board. So if you are able to make one of these meetings, that would be great. I think it's very important that as representatives of the community, the town boards and we also have the fire departments and the PTO scheduled to be able to ask questions of the board as well as of the administration. So if anybody knows they can make it Thursday night, we'll start with that.
John?
Put down Mr. Dunn for Thursday at Nassau Town Board. Thank you, John.
I'll volunteer for the PTO November 6th.
Okay. February 6th, PTO, Mr. Buno.
East Green Bush? Mr. Mark? Anybody else? We could have more than one, so if you want to-
More than, more than one.
Check the schedule first. Okay.
And again, if you want to shoot me an email, that would be great. We'll coordinate it.
SCODEC?
I'm going to try to make all of them, but I don't, I can't commit right now. I can commit for this Thursday, but it's my intent to, to go to all of them. This is a very important project.
Thank you.
I can't do the 25th.
I, I should be able to do the 20th after my busy season.
The 20th?
The February 20th.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
I should be able to do the 25th, SCODEC.
John?
Thanks, John.
North Green Bush? On the east? Anybody?
I'm just going to check my schedule.
That one's still tentative.
Probably do it, but I'll check.
Cheryl, maybe? It's out your way, right?
Yeah.
We also have the DeFreeceville Fire Department on the first. Last time we did a capital project and we did a couple of budget presentations and they were well received. So that's, you know, a good opportunity to interact with the volunteer fire department as well.
Right. Yeah. So we have some folks penciled in and then get back to, if you want to attend as well, in addition to the folks that are here that could commit tonight, then we can have at least one, maybe more board members attending. So, and I encourage anybody who's resident in those, those towns to certainly come to those meetings as well as part of your community.
I did, on the capital project, I did want to thank some of the students in Syracuse University Project Public Policy Course. I did have an opportunity last week and one of those, a couple of those students are here this evening. I was invited to participate in a student presentation on a proposal for a bill they did to include air conditioning in the elementary schools. And I was certainly able to provide a lot of facts and data regarding that to support the student's presentation because that is a big part of our project. I also want to mention that that was mentioned by the governor in the state of the state remarks that she made this week, that she will be having a budgetary proposal to allow schools increased access to funding for air conditioning in the schools. So we're going to be watching that very closely. That may give us an opportunity, depending on the eligibility for the funding, to offset some of the borrowing that we may be planning within this particular project and to do other work. So it was nice to see that our proposal is in sync with what our students are thinking about, but also what our governor is thinking about. So very, very good.
Any questions for Jeff on the capital project? No? Things are moving?
Well, well.
I know it was a pretty aggressive process from start of a 19 construction manager and then the architects and reviewing everything. So I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing and the feedback we're getting from people, staff and community. And we're really excited about this project and the investment in the community for, for our students and families for the, for the future.
The only other point I want to make about the capital project, because the question of funding has come up tonight as we talked about the reserve, the capital project is funded in a different manner and separate from the district's general fund budget. So typically projects that involve renovations to facilities are funded through borrowing over a 15-year period. And during that 15-year period, as the district is paying back the loan, so to speak, the district is receiving state aid back into the revenue side of the budget at about 75 cents of every dollar. So 75% of the project is paid back by New York State on portions of the project that are eligible for aid over that same 15-year period. So that, in addition to the capital reserve, keeps our project local share at zero additional impact because we're going to be retiring debt just at about the time that this project will come online in 2025, 2026. So since we have a different audience here, I wanted to just explain that those monies are not currently within the district with the exception of the $2 million within the capital reserve. It's a borrowing that occurs in accordance with New York State Education Department regulations. And because of our districts and our boards' financial planning over the years, we have a very good bond rating, which enables our district to borrow those monies at a very, very low interest rate compared to what, you know, a private company would, would, would experience or an individual experience within the community. So a capital project has required to be approved by New York State Education Department anytime you're spending more than $10,000. There's not much you can accomplish with $10,000 nowadays. It's the best way to fund the project, but it's separate and apart from any considerations regarding the general fund budget, programs, teachers, support staff, salaries. It's two separate, two separate funding streams.
Thank you. Not again.
Well, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Styles. You remember that Tom Ross, our department chair, came last year and presented to the board some changes that the science department was proposing for physics. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Styles to talk about a new course. for physics. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Styles to talk about a new course that we're asking the board to approve.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Styles. Yeah. So as you remember, last year when Mr. Ross came forward, we created the new physics honors course. And then during that presentation, he discussed a two-year plan to also have a college physics course. So that's what this is. So at our November 8th CCS meeting, the committee did endorse the college physics course. So we're looking to implement this course for this upcoming fall to include it in our program studies. In terms of costing, it's really just going to be some summer curriculum writing. So we're not looking to add staff for this course. And we think that this is going to be a better option for a non-calculus-based physics course. You know, so, you know, we can see students taking, for example, you know, possibly honors physics as juniors and then having the option to either take AP physics as a senior, take the college physics course as a senior, or other AP science courses. So we're we're, we really are excited about this option. We think this is going to be really a great option for our students.
Questions or what?
We have a second elective course that's being proposed. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Styles. It's an interesting course to me because I have two daughters at home that enjoy these kinds of story apocalyptic stories, what do they call it dystopian? Fiction books. So Kate Hastings, I think, is here as well. Is Kate here? Very good. So this is an exciting course.
Take your time.
As Ms. Hastings is getting her water. So again, so this course was endorsed through CCS at the November 8th meeting as well. And looking to implement it for this upcoming fall, 2024. And again, in terms of costs, some summer curriculum writing, you know, some possible books, but we're not looking to add staffing for this course. Turn it over to.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kate Hastings, 20-year veteran teacher. I've been here since 2005. And I'm here today to present a new course that I'm really excited to be developing. It's a semester-long English course for seniors, and I'm sure you know that seniors, most seniors have the option of taking two English courses during their senior year. And it gives them the opportunity to delve into things that they're interested in. And it also sort of mimics, you know, post post-secondary education and how you can go into what you're interested in. So this course would be sort of a deep dive into the allegorical nature of apocalyptic and dystopian stories. So it sounds depressing to say apocalyptic. But the way that I'm considering this would not be that way. So I just wanted to give you like a quick example of sort of what I'm envisioning here. So I would think about like a zombie apocalypse, right? You've all seen zombie shows and zombie movies. And on the surface, they seem to be about these terrible horrifying tales of humans becoming monsters and destroying themselves. But in actuality, zombies represent all sorts of ideas and things in our society. So they can represent our collective anxieties and our social fears. They can represent our fear of uncontrollable pandemics. They can represent the fear of losing our individuality in a mass consumer culture. So zombie stories, they present us with a way to face those fears and also consider how those ideas affect our lives. So in almost every zombie movie, humanity prevails, right? In the end, they tend to be thematically didactic stories about human connection and human resilience and the importance of understanding our responsibilities, both individually, socially, and government responsibilities. So the idea would be, we would read a book. And let's say the book would be about maybe like a mass consumer society destroying us, right? And then we would watch a movie about zombies. And we would make the connections of what the zombie movie film is teaching us that's similar to what the novel was teaching us about, you know, something like consumerism. So basically, that's kind of the premise here. At base, it's focused on getting people to think beyond the literal, which is really what we do every day as English teachers. In the long run, what I'm hoping is that this is just another course that helps us to develop really strong critical thinkers who, you know, they're comfortable questioning and critiquing the world around them. So that's it. Are there any questions?
So it says fiction and film, right? What's the film component?
Well, like I said, they would read a novel and then they'd watch a film and they would synthesize. Yeah. It would not, but the idea is not to read a book and then watch a film of the book. That's kind of boring in my mind. So it's really more about synthesis, which is a really important skill for them to have going forth in the world. So there'd be different themes like, you know, war, nature, other things that are involved in like apocalyptic ideas. And then we would draw connections to contemporary societal issues or other things like that.
So a couple of questions. Is, are we the first district that has this type of course?
I mean, I think so. I've never seen it anywhere else. And I came up with the idea. So I mean, I'm sure there's other, I've seen college courses that are of a similar vibe, but.
And are the seniors have enough flexibility to have enough kids that are, you know, interested in doing this? How is their course load will be able to fit in a good decent amount of seniors that would like to do it?
Well, since they have choice, it's going to depend on how many students are interested in it. And if they're not interested, then it wouldn't run. But I think that dystopian literature has, it's really popular right now. So I'm thinking that we would get at least one course to run for sure. And they do have the flexibility because there's during senior year, they'd have to take two courses, one each semester. And one has to be writing and one has to be reading. And this will be your reading option.
So there may be even more demand than just one.
Right. They could run both semesters depending on who just heard it. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I love the idea. You know, I think that you know, when all the chips are down, right, you kind of see, you know, what are you really made out of and kind of related to, you know, yourself and see yourself in the world in all these weird different contexts that we all live in, right? And I just like the idea. It's always been one of my favorite topics and ways to help me think outside the box with English. So.
Me too. Okay, thank you so much.
Later on, there are resolutions to approve those courses.
All right. Our next item is a discussion item about investments and the investment policy. Soon we're going to be led that by Jen for that conversation.
I just want to give Jennifer a a shout out of appreciation for her work on this. One of the things that Jennifer did when she interviewed for the position was we had him do an authentic task and she she realized that the district was able to yield more revenue into the district through looking at some of our reserves and making some prudent investments. So she worked on this over the holiday break, and I'm happy to say that she has accomplished a small portion of what she's aspiring to do long term for our district.
Okay, thank you. So as a lot of the district's cash flow comes in early in the fiscal year. So the district has, you know, excess cash, excess cash flow to be able to invest as we're paying our bills and payroll throughout the year. So one of the things that I recognized was an opportunity, interest rates are in a good position in excess of 5% currently. And so I went ahead and spoke with our banking relationship with KeyBank and their investment arm, KeyBank Capital Markets. And we started purchasing treasury bills, which is an authorized investment under our investment policy. So we started doing some laddering, being conservative, as I'm still getting my arms around of our cash flow here. And the result of that is we're basically laddering, you know, on the payroll cycle, a two-week, 14-day treasury bill, one-month treasury bill, a two-month and a three-month. And then we took all of our reserve money and placed it in a six-month T-bill. So what that means, the reason we went with a six-month T-bill on our reserves is because you might have heard some information in the news that interest rates might be on the decline in the near future. So we wanted to preserve, you know, the highest interest rate we could. So that will get us through the end of the fiscal year. So the result of those investments is basically we broke it down into two accounts, operating cash account and a reserve cash account. The reserves are sitting at just under $18 million. And that it will be yielding approximately over about $450,000. So that six-month treasury bill will return investment earnings of $450,000. The laddering that we're doing on the operating cash is just, it's a short-term look and we're only through three months is yielding about $195,000. So we just actually rolled our 14-day note for payroll this last couple of weeks, and we just reinvested that. And that will add another $20,000 of investment earnings. So we'll continue to monitor that and, you know, roll those treasury bills. But with that, one of the things that I really would like to do is do a review of the investment policy. Also review our banking relationships and maybe have opportunities to diversify our relationships. And then also look into some liquidity data management. So we can maximize, you know, the value of that cash that's sitting idle when we don't need that.
Jen, could you just give me a quick explanation of laddering?
Laddering. So basically, we're looking at what our cash flow needs are. So we'll take a look at how much cash we need to have on hand to meet payroll, payer vendors over a period of time. So so for example, if, you know, payroll is $2.5 million every two weeks, we want to make sure we have that cash on hand. So we make sure that we have maturities that are only maybe two weeks. So that way we can have active cash. Yeah, liquid cash coming back to us to pay those bills. So then we basically look at our cash needs over a period of time. And we'll invest what we don't need, our estimated, what we don't need. For that period of time. And we were very conservative because I'm still getting handle on our cash flow projections. So right now, we're rolling like a $10 million note. We don't need $10 million to cover two weeks of expenses in the district, but you know, we wanted to be conservative, make sure we had enough cash on hand, you know, to to meet our obligations. So. So laddering is basically just structuring when those, that cash will come back and be liquid to us to pay our bills over time.
So the interest rate of the interest monies that come in, where does that go?
So the interest monies for the reserve account will end up being allocated back to those reserve accounts in proportion to their current balances. And then the operating cash will be just interest income into the district. So that becomes part of the general fund revenues.
So when they, when we look at the budget for the future in terms of funding reserves and having to.
Right. So what what this helps, you know, so obviously, if we have, you know, close to a half a million dollars coming into our reserve accounts, that's going to change our evaluation of the reserves and what those balances are. So we'll have to look at that from a different perspective. In terms of the budget and how we look at how we're going to budget revenue, obviously, you know, there's the tax levy, there's state aid. And some other miscellaneous revenues, which includes interest. So we'll have to evaluate that, you know, the the accommodating is still very volatile. I mean, it was just a couple of years ago, the interest rates were basically negative. You know, so I would caution how far we go in terms of budgeting interest revenue, because you want to be conservative with that, because then you don't want to create a budgetary gap in the next year when, you know, those interest rates might not be where they are now. But we want to try to capitalize what there is today. So.
So obviously, this is an area that I like.
Yes.
So completely agree. We do not want to risk budgeting interest income and then the rates drop. And then we're at risk. So I fully support that. But I'd like to investigate even more of a little bit of a full review of our investment policy, because when I looked at what we were kind of sitting on, I think we could have done better. You know, we should have invested for a long time. And even talk about diversifying our risk a little bit. So I'd like to say, you know, when we start looking at the investment policy, let's bring in other people to think about that, our banker relationships, perhaps people on the board and maybe even people in the public and kind of have a little bit more of an investment committee that's formal. So we can start looking at that because you've done an amazing job. And I think the more people that we have on it to talk about what they see could happen, it's just going to be even better for the district. So would love to be part of that and also love to open it up to other people and maybe even at some point, talk about an investment advisor, to be honest. I mean, we are sitting on a lot.
Jennifer has brought that up, that we probably will be using some professional services to help with this process.
Yes. Yes. So liquidity data management was just a little step, just to really maximize. So we actually have a call with a potential consultant.
Yeah, amazing job.
Couple of weeks to take a look at that. Because even in those 0% environments, there's still opportunities.
Right. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the statutes are.
Yeah. So that's the other thing. So in New York State, there are certain areas that, you know, safety is a huge factor. So versus the private sector, you know, it's preservation of capital, you know, your principal, you don't want to put any of that at risk. So there are limitations, you know, as to what we can do. But having diversified relationships in other banks, we've had a single relationship with a bank for a very long time. It may be an opportunity to look at that. You know, so there's, so there's lots of opportunities. So this is just the first step. So it's a very conservative approach, very, you know, it's not saying that we're not maximizing the opportunity at this point in time. But at least we're at least taking a step forward.
No, great job. Thank you.
I was wondering, Jen, just about like the, like, so talking about like laddering and liquidity, like, I was just wondering about one-time expenses and how easy it would be for the district. So I thought it was great to like the idea of laddering and being conservative. And the first thing I thought like that's so hard to capture is those one-time, like, I don't know if you have a quarterly payment of health insurance that don't occur. But it's just those, you know, semi annual.
Oh, sure. Right. Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah. So I mean, the district has things that happen at certain times of the year. Just as an example, our retirement system payments, you know, it's the entire, the employee's retirement system is due fully in December. So that's a one shot. We have debt service payments that happen at different points of the year. You know, obviously payroll is pretty predictable. But overall, you know, there is a systematic, you know, cash flow. But I'm still learning all of those peak times.
So the policy piece should disfall under the audit, like the fiscal advisory committee or finance?
These typically are separate. And most organizations usually have a finance committee and an investment committee.
We don't have one right now, right?
No.
No. So maybe it's ad hoc for now and then looks at both policy and advisor.
I would think as far as looking at the policy, I think this, the policy should be looked at by the finance and audit committee or the investment committee, separate and apart from our policy committee that may be brought to the policy committee. Because you're going to get into the nitty-gritty of the investment conversations, and then maybe you make some recommendations for revisions, and I would bring it to the policy committee. So.
Just a, just a comment to thank you for your forward thinking. I think this, what it really comes down to, what we're all talking about is this creates us, gives us an opportunity to update our policy on this particular area. But when we do that, let's be mindful that creating a policy that mirrors the market and gives you the flexibility within that policy to make the adjustments, because as we all know with investments, it's timing and predictions and things like that. And I think our policies need to go forward a little bit. And, you know, we're constantly renewing and reviewing, but this is one area that we have been overly conservative. And I don't necessarily think it's a negative, but, you know, we have reserve caps. We, we, we're always a little bit over on certain thresholds. And since you've taken the helm and we're getting a good, realistic snapshot of where we need to go. But my concern as we formulate these policies is where we're going to be in 10 years to at the same time. So thank you for for your insight on that.
And just one last comment. Another area that we could look at, which is pretty common, you probably know this, Jennifer, is vendor discounting and rebates, you know, using our purchasing power that we may have with some of our vendors to reduce down some costs. So just it doesn't need to happen now. It's just something else that we could look at and consider as we move forward to try to, you know, make sure we're conservative, especially with the inflation factors that we're having, right, and experiences.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks, Jen. Next item is the regular business, the approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Michelle, second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. Item B is the new course proposal regarding college physics. Any final questions? We heard from Roy, we heard from Mr. Ross last year. Need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, I need a second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. And the last one, we just heard from Ms. Hastings. Thank you very much again for the idea. Seems very interesting. I hope you get a lot of response. And any final comments or questions on that? I hope you get a lot of response and any final comments or questions on that? Need a motion to approve that. Mark, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Everyone was anxious to get the motion on that one, I think, so.
It's all about zombies.
Maybe I'll sit in on that. Can we audit that course? Pretty interesting. All right, thank you, everyone. Next item is committee reports. Move to Marissa.
I just wanted to report that we did post Mr. Rahar's principal position. So that's currently up and posting closes on January 26th. So I will have more to share once that posting closes and we start reviewing candidates.
What was the date again?
January 26th.
26, good. Very good. Jennifer, I think?
No, no reports.
Yes, we did have a Board of Education Policy Committee meeting on January 3rd. We reviewed the new requirement for public employee workplace balance prevention policy. Ms. Cannon will be coordinating that work with the assistance of Questar III Voces. We talked about some of the issues that may be involved in the requirements, including there is a requirement to do a risk assessment, which will be done by Questar III Voces. There is a requirement to involve our bargaining unit leaders or representatives in the process of developing a plan for implementation consistent with the policy. Ms. Cannon has reached out to the union leaders for forming that committee. While the legislation became effective January 4th, we must adopt a board policy by February 3rd. The policy is basically an enabling policy that outlines that we will have a program, that we will comply with the program and continuously review it. Risk assessment needs to be completed by March. Again, Questar III will be doing that and the prevention program needs to be implemented effective May 3rd. So the committee will be meeting, reviewing the requirements. I will be bringing the board policy to the board, likely at the next board meeting for a first reading. Additionally, I reviewed information that we received from the New York State School Boards Association. And may remember, we subscribed last year to the Policy Review Service. They've given us a list of policies that we currently have within our policy manual that could be eliminated or rescinded. Before we take those actions, wanted to get input from the Board Policy Committee as well as our administrators who are charged with various policy areas. Created a template that we sent out to the Policy Committee and to the administrators to give us feedback within the next couple of weeks. Feedback, should we keep the policy? Is it aligned with our current practices? Are there revisions that you would recommend if we can, if we do keep the policy? Or should we rescind the policy because it's outdated or it may overlap with another policy? So that process is, is part of the policy audit that we talked about last year. We figured it might be more efficient to start with those policies that School Boards Association says we don't need to have. So we're working through that process right now. So we expect to bring more policies to the board now that this committee is rolling. And some of the state requirements that were approved for implementation this year by the Board of Regents will require the board to update its policies. There are two important areas. One is homebound instruction. Homebound instruction is tutoring that is provided for students that are absent from school regarding either medical reasons or absent from school due to disciplinary matters in which they have been suspended or excluded from school. New York State has updated that requirement and increased the number of hours that are required to be provided to students who are on homebound instruction. The policy has shifted from secondary level requiring 10 hours a week to 15 hours a week, and to the best of our ability, ensuring that it's about two hours a day, three hours a day at the, at the secondary level, five hours a week at the elementary level to 10 or two hours a day. So there's been an increase. We've been following that policy change, but we need to revise our own local board policy to comply. Additionally, the state has reviewed, again, at the Commissioner of Education and Board of Regents level, concerns regarding school districts and use of timeout rooms and physical restraint. Use commissioner regulations require that schools ensure that they are using more interventions and behavioral supports. Before you would consider use of a timeout room, we have moved in that direction in terms of providing opportunities for kids to, who are experiencing behavioral issues, to have options within the classroom, including access to materials that can help students refocus. So we've moved away from timeout rooms. We are still permitted to use them, but in limited circumstances. And those uses have to tie to behavioral plans that are in place through the Committee on Special Education. The other issue in this policy is physical restraint. Physical restraint at times, unfortunately, is required to be utilized with students in the event that students may be causing, engaging in behaviors that pose a safety risk to themselves or to other children or staff. Used to be that physical restraint was permitted in the event that a student was trying to cause damage to property. That is no longer the case. We are only able to use physical restraint in very narrow, limited conditions where students are at risk of hurting themselves. And as part of an overall behavioral plan, an intervention plan that is put together through the supervision of the Special Education Department. So while we have moved our practices in that direction, the state wants every district to have a policy that reflects their new requirements. So we talked about that. I'll be bringing that policy forward to the board for a first reading as well at a future meeting. These are new requirements that came into place this school year. We have aligned our practices with the new requirements, but we need to update our policies. And those were the areas that we discussed in the Board Policy Committee last week.
Questions, board members? I have two questions. So East Green Bush has a ser, has the service for Questar III? And is this part of the service offering? Work they're gonna be doing for the risk assessment? It's part of the base and for Lisa being here?
There's an extra charge for it.
There is, okay.
It's not part of the level two, Questar III service. There's an extra charge based on, I believe, the number of employees.
Gotcha, okay. You know, there's a significant amount of work to be done with that. The other piece was in the, do we know if the homebound instruction, is that while in person delivery or? How much of in person?
Combination of in person or.
Virtual.
And in some, some cases, we find that the virtual works better for particular students and family situations and for staff. But it can be either, either or, a combination.
Okay, good, yeah, okay, that was it? Anybody else? Thank you, everyone, for the committee reports, table motions, I have none. Board, all business board members, anything? We now have consent agenda items A through F. We also had an addendum for the Science Olympiad Invitational Competition, which we just found out about as well. So any questions or comments on the consent agenda? So we'll include the addendum as part of that consent? That's okay?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, Michelle.
D. So we, we've been getting some donations for the middle school's lunch debt. And I'm curious to see, like, how that works. Do, do we go out and solicit that? I mean, you know, how does somebody know we have debt in the middle school that they needed to donate?
The students' debts or this overall debt in the program?
It's lunch debt from students. Which is great, it's just, it's weird that they just picked that.
We don't go out and solicit it. I think, I think this started several years ago and I've seen it happen in other districts where, where people have become aware that in some cases, families are struggling to eat the payments. They don't necessarily qualify for, for free or reduced lunch. And so it's been a public discussion at the state level and at the local level, particularly when districts were required to have policies that prevent shaming. I don't know if you remember that, where there was a, in some cases, there was a feeling that schools were engaging in allowing lesser options for kids who owed money, like a peanut butter jelly sandwich instead of the entree that was being offered. And that was considered to be an embarrassment to students. So when that shaming policy came into place, non-shaming policy came into place, the level of public awareness regarding the fact that some families were incurring debt, I think that kind of triggered members of the community, then members of the community to come forward and start to make these kinds of donations. This is debt that has been on the books prior to the shift that we made to the free lunch program that golf middle school did qualify for because of the eligibility criteria. As an aside, we will be bringing a report back to the board regarding how that's going. Colleen Wise, Jennifer and I and Marissa met last week to talk a little bit about the budget for food service for next year. And in that conversation, there seemed to be more and more. There are increases at some of the schools regarding the number of students that are now receiving breakfast and lunch as a result of that. And we talked a little bit about that increase in some staffing adjustments that might need to be made next year in some of the larger schools, but we haven't necessarily looked at every option that might be available to avoid those staff adjustments. Secondly, the, the, the advocacy regarding the inequities of the free lunch formula that is used seemed to have been getting priority among school districts. I know I shared with you that Dr. Cruz had written a letter to the editor. Colleen Wise, our lunch, our school lunch manager, myself and Jennifer are gonna engage in an advocacy day that the nutrition, school nutrition programs are having. And we've set up an opportunity to talk to John McDonald about this issue. And I'm hoping that when the governor talks about her budget next week, this will happen, that she will mention this because wellness, nutrition and mental health and academics all go together. So East Green Bush is being used as an example, along with Shen and the Hoa, of districts that have kids who also, kids and families who also struggle to afford school lunch, who just happen to be attending a school that doesn't meet the eligibility requirement. Well, at some schools that do meet the eligibility requirement, there are families and kids that can afford to pay for the lunch and that's the inequity that we're talking about. East Green Bush is, is a perfect example. Shen is experiencing the same thing in some other districts in our region. Where not all the schools are eligible.
And we did talk about at least investigating how much it would cost on our taxes if we choose to give everybody.
And that'll be part of our budget presentations.
Anyone else? I do want to recognize that we have two retirements, staff retirements, teachers, long-term teachers over 30 years, I would regulate Maureen McQ and Carol Willis. For the many years of dedicated service, we'll see them in June for the recognition. And I just want to say thank you for all your years of service to the district and our families in our community. So with that, I need a motion to approve by consent those items. Jesse, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you very much. New business, board members, anything? Second, public forum, anyone want to speak? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jeff. Jeff wants to talk about something.
You may have heard the governor talk about the science of reading. Recently, she did a press event at Waterbury City School District and also mentioned it in her State of the State, as well as she mentioned mental health clinics and increased funding for mental health clinics and air conditioning in the schools. All three of those areas are areas that we've been working on. And I just wanted with the teachers here and the, some of the administrators that have been responsible for this, to know that we've been working on the science of reading for at least four years, if not more. Our teachers have been engaged in professional development, provided by Questar Voces and other resources. They have been working with Lisa Mahar and each other to collaborate on research-based practices related to literacy and reading instruction. They have been working, again, under the coordination of our previous assistant superintendent, Jim McQ, our current superintendent, Roy Stiles, to align instructional resources that we are purchasing for intervention with kids and reading, as well as there is currently a pilot for literacy program at the elementary level, which is all, all of these things are aligned with the science of reading. So we are well positioned for any state mandate that may come our way. In fact, we probably would be able to provide some of the workshops for districts that may be just learning about this because of the expertise that our teachers have developed in the science of reading over the last several years with the professional development support from School Improvement Services at Questar III and through the coordination of our curriculum office and the hard work of our teachers. That's gonna be a topic of discussion for the next several months. I just want everybody to know who's here and who's watching the board meeting that we, we are well positioned for this. The only, the only caveat would be we want to make sure that we still maintain as a school district the discretion to select our instructional materials and our interventions that fall within the criteria of the science of reading. We don't want to shift from resources that we're already considering to a state mandated resources, which became kind of the topic of New York City, where there were, I think there were like three options for the schools in New York City. What we're doing is aligned with the science of reading. And we want to continue to support what we're doing because we're making great gains. Our VLA scores and our math scores, we're gonna be coming out with this, were some of the highest in the municipal region last year in part because of the effectiveness of the teachers, but it's also some of the professional development and the interventions that we've been providing that align with the governor's proposal.
Thanks, Bethany. First thing I remember when I heard that, I was like, wow, we've been doing it in the district for, for a while. It's great. Thank you, Jeff, for that update. So board forum, Jesse, anything? Any final comments? Good? Sure? Okay, Jennifer? Mark? John? Michelle?
Just want to give applause to the middle school. That was an amazing recognition last week for being number one.
Cheryl? I don't have anything at this time. So we do have need for exam session for purposes of contract update and personnel matters. So with that, everyone have a great night. Appreciate your attendance this evening. I'll need a motion on the board to go into exam session. Jesse, second. John, all those in favor? All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.